Harwich Planning Board Meeting of May 13th. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm going to ask people to please, for the sake of fire safety, we have a limit of 145 people at this meeting. There is ample seating in the next meeting room over, however, it is also full. So what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to ask you to please stay away from the entry. We have two. We're going to go out of order and hopefully move out a couple of chairs so that you can have seating in this room. So we're going to actually go with the, the public meeting item first, then to the second public hearing item. So I'll ask you to bear with me, but I need you to, you know, we're either going to have to call the Fire Chief or, or postpone this meeting until we can get a larger space. So I'm going to need you.
Those two chairs.
What?
Those are for, those are for presenters, ma'am.
So, I mean, I see chairs here available, but if you want to sit on the floor, but you're going to have to stay out of the door frame, sorry. You can probably hear it, you know, a few feet back, but the door frame, the door has to be open. So this is a meeting, the Planning Board is held in person and is available for viewing in the go-to-meeting format. Members of the public with any interest in providing testimony regarding any item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. It's, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:32. And according to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, will then inform anybody else who is attending the meeting. Is there anybody attending, recording the meeting other than our faithful Billy Galvin with the camera, recording? No, seeing none. Then I invite you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
That door should then be open. Did you just hear that? We don't have any volume in the other room.
Caleb?
Thank you, Caleb. So I'm assuming that the 30 people in the other room are not going to be interested in the A and R on our public meeting, case PB 2025-15. 97 Kendrick Drive Realty Trust, Kim A. Cronin trustee through their agent Thaddeus Eldridge, plan of land in Harwich, Mass, prepared by Moran Engineering Associates, dated April 24th, 2025, seek endorsement of an approval not required, plan of land to merge two lots into one lot located at 93 Kendrick Road and 0 Kendrick Road, assessors map 108 parcels E2-2 and E2-3. Proposed parcel is approximately 47,581 square feet. Parcel is in the RR Residential Rural District. Do I have a member of the trust here to present this?
You didn't see the applicant, so I'm just going to go over the information.
Okay.
And pursuant to Mass General Law Sections, Chapter 41, Section 81L and 81M, staff is recommending that the, the Planning Board endorse the approval not required because the property on 93 and 0 Kendrick Road, up front, has the appropriate frontage on a public way. Further, the merging of the two lots into one is eliminating a non-conforming lot, and that's actually a positive item. And so with that, it does meet criteria under the approval not required, according to Mass General Law, so I would recommend to the Board to endorse the approval not required.
Any questions from the Board? Mary? Any questions from the public? So this is not a public hearing, so may I have a motion?
So I would move that the Planning Board endorse the plan of land in Harwich, Mass, prepared for Kim A. Cronin, planned by Moran Engineering Associates, 941 Main Street, South Harwich, Mass, 02661, dated 4/24/2005.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second item on the agenda this evening is case number PB 2025-14, Great Western Realty LLC, Timothy De Lude, manager, owner, address 170 Great Western, Harwich, Mass, 02645, authorizes T&amp;B Coatings and Customs LLC, Teigen Michael Twomey, SOC Signatory, seeks approval for manufacturing use special permit. The proposed use is for the application of Saracote and Powder Coat to firearm components, tools, heavy-use gear, and equipment. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-14i and 325-51, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. The property is located at 136 Factory Road, Unit 4, assessors map 58, parcel G4-2-4, and the unit is 1,151 square feet. Parcel is in the Industrial Limited IL zoning district. Good evening, how are you this evening?
Well, how are you, sir?
Great, thanks. So let's hear it.
I'm not sure where to start. We've never done this before, but we'd like to thank everybody for having us tonight. Basically, our summary basically sums it up. The facility will be used to apply Saracote, which is a liquid, very low VOC, volatile organic compound, which is what most body shops and things of that nature put out. This product is extremely low, it's actually 50-state exempt from VOCs. Powder Coat is a zero VOC output product that's applied as a powder through an electrostatic process, and then it's baked on as a solid. All of the waste products will be handled properly according to Mass law, disposed at local waste hazard facilities. We have some listed, all the dates and the date and times that the local waste hazard collection times are posted, as well as we can be in contact with certified state entities that also handle waste hazard materials.
The dump, the Harwich Town Dump offers a waste collection, certain dates out of the year.
Right.
This year they have, they have six dates, so by the time if we ever need to get rid of paint, bottles, rags that we accumulated over time with our jobs, we bring it to them, they dispose them.
All waste materials are stored in compliant containers, overnight storage bins, I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, small red fire safety containers, all chemicals. We really only use one chemical, it's acetone. It's stored in a OSHA-approved flammable, or flame-proof container. We have spill, I'm not sure what the word is, spill cleanup abilities, we have like kitty litter type material on hand, we have fire extinguishers on hand, we have fire blankets and all of that, things of that nature on hand. I think we have all the safety equipment that we need, respirators, things of that nature.
In case, in case of a spill, Saracote only comes in about a four-ounce bottle, so it's a very, very small.
Comes in very, very small quantities, it's not, we're not dealing with like 55-gallon drums of any type of fluid or chemical or anything of that nature.
Okay.
It's not like we're a body shop or anything like that.
Great. Ms. Flynn?
Okay, thank you. As the applicants have indicated, it's T&amp;B Coatings and Customs LLC, they are looking for a manufacturing special use permit. They're located at 136 Factory Road, Unit 4. Their commercial condominium unit that they're leasing is 1,151 square feet, so this is a rather small and tailored business. And the manufacturing use special permit is required by the special, by the Planning Board, and the application of Saracote and Powder Coat to firearm components, tools, as well as heavy-use gear, gear and equipment. In my discussions with the Police Department, this type of activity and the use of these parts is very heavily regulated, both at the local, state, and federal level. I've received positive comments from the Police Department related to the operations of the business. And the, in terms of applicable laws and regulations, again, this is pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Code of Harwich at 32514i and 32551 special permit. In my, excuse me, in my, seeking departmental comments, none of the town departments had any concerns relative to the activity of the business, and there is no development, there is no change to the existing conditions of, of the site, and so I would recommend to move forward granting the manufacturing special use permit.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the Board?
When you're, when you're working with firearms, do you ever have all of the parts that would be necessary to assemble a gun?
Yes.
Outsite?
Yes. It would depend on the condition of the firearm would be dropped off in, and the work that would be being performed to it.
Is, is there any obligation to secure that stuff under federal law?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and we also, we have, we have a, I'm not sure what the word is, a.
We have an office that.
Yep.
We had to get security gates for, we had to reinforce the door, deadbolt, security cameras.
We have an approved safe, we have a security system in place, we have, like you said, we have security gates, multiple, multiple layers of security to prevent any theft or anything like that.
Does the security system dial out to the local police?
It doesn't yet, but we will be getting that in place.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? I had a question was, which was about the duration of the agreement. Was there a time constraint?
It's an annual lease.
It's an annual lease, okay.
Yes, yes.
Great. No questions, any questions from the public? Please, Mary.
So I just had one question through you to Christine. If it's an annual lease, is it a special permit that sun, sunsets at the year, and they would have to come in for, for approval to renew it?
That's a good question. I didn't anticipate that being an issue, but I can, we can condition that, you know, or I can go and check with Town Council on that.
I would, I guess, I don't know how my colleagues feel, I'd be okay if we conditioned it that way.
Sure.
And just the notion is that it would have to, they would have to come in and apply in time for us to have a meeting and be able to renew it, just to confirm that all of your prerequisites are still in place, the, to Harry's point, the security system, the, any of the.
Absolutely.
And give the Police Department an opportunity to, to just confirm that for us, for renewal.
Okay.
How my colleagues feel about that.
I think that's absolutely fine, I just wanted to, I thought I saw something in the.
I didn't see a renewal, like a sun setting.
Yeah, I was, I was, I thought Meg mentioned it in one of her communications, but I guess not, okay. Well, if we can condition it that way, and we're all in good, let's, I'm happy to close the hearing and move ahead with the vote then. May I have a motion to clear the?
So I'd move that the, we vote to close the public hearing on case number PB 2025-14.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
So at this point, I would move that the Planning Board vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the applicant, the applicants are Teigen Michael Toomey and Beau Qualieri, owners of T&amp;B Coatings and Customs LLC. Two, that the subject property is 136 Factory Ave., Unit 4, assessors map 58, parcel G4-2-4. Three, the property is located in the Industrial Limited IL zoning district. Four, the application materials for a manufacturing use special permit to apply Saracote and Powder Coat to firearm components, tools, heavy-use gear, and equipment were submitted to the Town Clerk on April 15th, 2025. Five, the applicant is seeking a manufacturing use special permit in accordance with the requirements of the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-14, Sub 1, manufacturing is permitted in industrial limited zoning district by a use special permit, provided that at no time will such use result or cause in excessive dust, smoke, smog, observable gas, fumes, or odors, or other atmospheric pollution, objectionable noise. Objectionable noise.
Glare.
Glare, yeah, just give me a second. Glare or vibration discernible beyond the property lines of the industry, hazard of fire or explosion, or other hazard to any adjacent building or land, or to surface water or groundwater. Six, the applicant shall comply with all requirements, permits, and licenses from local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. Seven, the Planning Board held a public hearing on May 13th, 2025. This decision shall run with the property. Oh, am I in the wrong place?
Yeah, I think you.
I'm sorry.
I think six is, there is no.
Let me go back to six, there is no, let me redo that, go back to five, that it ends with observable gas, fumes, or odors, or other atmospheric pollution, objectionable noise, glare, or vibration discernible beyond the property lines of the industry, hazard of fire, or explosion, or other physical hazard to any adjacent building or land, or to surface water or groundwater. Six, there is no new development or proposed changes to the existing conditions at 136 Factory Road. Seven, the Planning Board did hold a public hearing on May 13th, 2025. And eight, in addition, the Board finds that A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, B, the specific site and its appropriate location for such use, structure, and condition, C, there will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and seven, adequate, eight, Sub D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper denitrification, proper operation of the proposed use. This includes a provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facility is necessary for protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embainments.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Sorry about that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Are we adding the annual?
That'll be the condition.
Okay.
The findings of fact.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
So I would move that the Planning Board vote to approve with conditions, case number PB 2025-14, T&amp;B Coatings and Customs LLC, 136 Factory Road, Unit 4, assessors map 58, parcel G4-2-4, for manufacturing use special permit for the application of Saracote and Powder Coat to firearm components, tools, heavy-use gear, and equipment within the Industrial Limited IL zoning district pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-14L and 325-51. The decision based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and with the following conditions imposed relative to the use special permit review. One, the applicants are Teigen Michael Toomey and Beau Qualieri, owners of T&amp;B Coatings and Customs LLC. Two, the subject property is 136 Factory Road, Unit 4, assessors map 58, parcel G4-2-4. Three, the property is located in the Industrial Limited IL zoning district. Four, the application materials for a manufacturing use special permit to apply Saracote and Powder Coat to firearm components, tools, heavy-use gear, and equipment were submitted to the Town Clerk on April 15th, 2025. Five, the manufacturing use special permit in accordance with the requirements of the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-14L, manufacturing is permitted in industrial limited zoning district by a use special permit, provided that at no time will such use result in or cause excessive dust, smoke, smog, observable, observable gas, fumes, or odors, or other atmospheric pollution, objectionable noise, glare, or vibration discernible beyond the property lines of the industry, hazard of fire or explosion, or other physical hazard in any adjacent building or land, or to surface water or groundwater. Six, the applicant shall comply with all requirements, permits, and licenses from local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. Seven, the Planning Board held a public hearing on May 13th, 2025. Eight, the decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding upon future owners. Nine, this use special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the Town Clerk, that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and either that no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner and the record and parcel address. Ten, this special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or, in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. Eleven, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. Twelve, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich. And thirteen, this special permit shall sundown on the end of the day on May 12th, 2026, and shall be subject to renewal by the Planning Board via a future application.
Good. I have a motion.
Motion.
And I have a second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous, I so declare it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, this brings us to the case number PB 2025-11, SSH Port LLC. Robert C. DiMarco, manager, 1 Campanelli Drive, Brantree, Mass, 02184, through their agent, Marion Rose Esquire, Singer &amp; Singer Law Office, 26 Upper County Road, Dennis, Mass, 02639, seeks approval for a multifamily special permit and site plan review special permit with request for waivers. The proposed project is to construct a 28-unit multifamily structure and reconfigured parking. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-51, Sections 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 606 Route 28, assessors map 14, parcel Z18-2, and the parcel is approximately 76,226 square feet. The parcel is located in the Commercial Village CV and the Residential Low Density RL zoning districts within the Village Commercial Overlay District, VCOD. Good evening, and before we get going, I have to reiterate, we have to keep the door frame clear. We have an open seat here, I don't know if there are any other in the back, but unless we can do this without any people in the doorway, under the door frame, we'll have to call.
We'll have to call the meeting.
We'll have to call, we'll have to call the meeting and have to continue it to another date, so I just ask you to step away from the door frame. I'm sorry, Ms. Rose?
Wonderful, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Thank you.
Perfect. I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport.
How do you do?
Okay? Let me get closer.
There we go.
There we go. I'm here on behalf of SSH Port, the applicant, for the 606 Route 28 property. Christine Flynn has issued a staff report, and I've submitted a summary, which describes the project, but I'm certain we'll go into a lot more detail tonight. It's a 28-room condominium development intended for home ownership rather than rental, and the project requires two, two special permits from this Board. The first is for a site plan review special permit, and the second is for a multifamily use special permit. The project is conforming for all setbacks, height, and coverage, and it does not need additional zoning board relief. The multifamily use is allowed in the CV and in the RL zoning districts. We will need subsequent to this review, a stormwater permit and a curb cut permit from the state. At this point, I want to be transparent. It's clear that there's a lot of interest in this project, and it's clear that we won't be finishing our report on this project in this first meeting, there'll be multiple, multiple meetings.
Just a little louder.
Certainly.
Thank you.
There will be multiple meetings, I'm guessing. In this first meeting, what I'm hoping to do is to introduce the project to this Board, to introduce the applicants to this Board, to show the history of how they came to propose this project, and to introduce you to the experts who will further explain the project. We want your questions, and we want to hear more from the public. We'll respond, if we can, to questions tonight, and if not, at the next meeting, where we're taking all your questions down. Since we applied, a lot has happened. There was a meeting that we held, a community meeting on May 2nd, and a number of people from the public came, we're estimating well over 100. After the meeting on May 2nd, the applicants had individual meetings with as many direct abutters as they could reach out to, and it's the vast majority of direct abutters. And I'd say now that if there is a direct abutter whom we haven't reached out to, please speak to me or a member of the team, and give your contact information, and we'll do that before the next meeting. Last week, or, and so last week, Rob DiMarco and the project manager, Jeff Wannens, met with many of these abutters. Yesterday, we received a staff report from Christine, we also received peer review reports on stormwater and on the site plan. We are awaiting a peer review on the traffic.
(bell dings)
We're all good? And so, the traffic. Tonight, you'll hear from me, you'll hear from the civil engineer, you'll hear from the landscape architect, and the architect from the project. We'd like to put, while we think that the traffic issue here is something that is really supportive of this project because of the lessening of intensity of the residential use versus what we all know is a very intense Sunday school traffic use in the peak times, in the peak, at the peak season, in the peak hours, we want to make sure that our presentation on that is complete. So I may mention traffic in this because it's connected to the other things that we'll be talking about, but please know that we will have our traffic expert here as soon as she's been able to review the peer review report and discuss that with the peer reviewer. I also want to flag that we will be supplementing our report with, supplementing our application, rather, as a result of talking to neighbors with an updated lighting plan, which we'll discuss the basics of tonight, but the plan will be in your hands before the next meeting. We'll also be updating the landscaping plan, again, in response to meeting with abutters. There'll be a photometric plan, that's the plan that shows whether light extends over the property bounds, whether we meet the Harwich bylaw, we'll be providing that as well. We'll also be pulling, putting, providing pull sheets for additional lighting that's on the structure, and you'll see some of that tonight in our slides. We'll be providing updated renderings as well. The bottom line is, we appreciate your time and commitment, as well as the towns' planning staff and departments, who we've met with in department head meetings, and who, other than the Board of Health, has no additional comments, but we appreciate all the time that's been given thus far, and we know there will be much more. And we welcome your questions as the process moves forward. Now, I'd like to briefly introduce some of the members of the team and let you know where they're going to be presenting. where they're going to be presenting in the process tonight. Mike Kelly, you're first, and Rob DiMarco. Mike and Rob are partners at Campanelli. They are majority owners and essentially the applicants for this project. SSH Port is an LLC, but it's all intertwined with Campanelli. Campanelli is a development firm out of Braintree. That's part of the history with Rob and with Mike, but they met on the Cape, serving ice cream at Sunday School. They served ice cream in the summers as high school students, they served ice cream in college, and so they then became partners at Campanelli. Campanelli is a vertically integrated development company, so as you're hearing from these people, they're all professionals in their field. We have a civil engineer that's outside of Campanelli, but the others, the architect and landscape architect are also working with Campanelli. Next, I'd like to introduce Garrett Horstall, who's our civil engineer. He'll talk first, discussing the existing conditions and the proposed conditions on the site, to an extent, the stormwater, and to extent, the septic. Jeff Linens, here we go. He also works at Campanelli, and he has a back, a background in landscape architecture. He provided the landscape, landscape plans here. He's also going to be the master of the slides as we go through our presentation. The last expert who you'll see at their next hearing, I'm imagining, is Kirsten Braun from Chapel Engineering, and she's our traffic expert. And you may, depending on the questions we have tonight, hear from a member of the BSC group who is developing the septic plan for this project. So, I've mentioned, Rob and Mark have a history with Sunday School and a history, a long history with each other. They purchased Sunday School, both the businesses in Harwich Port and Dennis Port and the properties, about three years ago, and since that time, they've been running Sunday School as it's always been run, as an ice cream shop. Over the three years, in particular with the Harwich Port branch, they've had to supplement, they've had to have cash infusions to keep the property going, to keep that branch running. And so, that caused them to think about what they would need to do if they decided to do something else with the property. They had to do that as businessmen, and because they're developers, they have that in their brain to think about what could happen instead when the current use is not working as a business. They looked at what's allowed by right in the CV zoning district, and one of the uses that's allowed by right is a restaurant lounge use. Ember, as you probably know, is right next door, and that would be a by right, assuming it met the site plan specifications use for this property, which is a little larger than Ember and already has eighty-three parking spaces. Medical offices are also a by right use, as are repair shops and commercial parking. There are others, but those are the ones that came to mind. They looked at the site, where it is, in Harwich Port, and where it is related to other development. As we've said, it's a split-zoned area with the CV in the front and the residential RL in the back, and it's kind of in a transition area, I think. It's not in the center-center of Harwich Port, but towards the east, there's more commercial, and towards, towards, actually, switch that, towards the west, there's more commercial, and towards the east, it becomes more residential. And so, they have Melrose, which is across the street, which has a similar use to this as well. They looked at the bylaw to see what could be done here. Multifamily use is, as I've said, a use that's allowed in both of these zoning districts. They decided to keep the structure of this, of the condo structure within, entirely within the CV zoning district. The parking is under the building and to the rear. They decided to propose what's before you. It's a twenty-eight unit structure organized as a condominium for homeownership. It appealed to them because the location emphasizes walkable living, it's near Harwich Port Village Center, but they think it would appeal to people who don't want continued maintenance of a single-family home. There's covered parking, there's elevator access, and there's, it's going to be finished in a way that's comparable in quality to other new homes in the neighborhood. And again, it conforms and meets all of those buffer size height and setback requirements. As you're listening to the experts who will speak shortly, I want to ask that you keep in mind the requirements of the bylaw and the considerations that the planning board may consider. For a site plan review special permit, there are a number of considerations. First, that the project not adversely affect the neighborhood. Second, that the specific site is appropriate, is an appropriate location for the structure use or conditions. Third, that there's no hazard to vehicles or pedestrians created by the project. And fourth, that the property will operate as it should, as it should, and I'm paraphrasing, but that the plans back that up. The multifamily special permit says you need all of that, you need a site plan review special permit, and then there are particular issues for multifamily housing. And so, multifamily housing needs to confirm that the, the project is connected to the water system, the municipal water system, that the size of the rooms are of a minimum size, that there's adequate septic, that there's parking and adequate screening, and that every entrance has a covering to protect residents from the weather. So, it's kind of a grab bag of specific requirements. I think you'll see as we go through, we meet all the multifamily housing requirements, and we believe we meet all of the requirements. Now, I'd like to introduce Garrett Horstall, who's the civil engineer from Kelly Engineering. He'll speak to the existing conditions, the proposed conditions, and the waivers that are related to parking. I have to mention, and he'll, I may be stealing his thunder, but in terms of parking, sure, in terms of parking, we're exceeding what's required under the bylaw for this use. We're exceeding it by over thirteen parking spaces, and the reason for that is because we want this to work well as a condominium development, and we believe, we believe that with the size of these units and the way they're going to be used, it's likely that the unit dwellers will have two, have two cars. And so, every, every resident or every unit owner will have two reserved spots, and there will be twelve additional spots for visitors or whoever else might be there. And the reason I'm mentioning that now is when Garrett talks about the waivers, a lot of, four out of the five waivers, deal with the fact that we're providing more parking, so the conditions are a little bit tighter. Rather than saying we might put in parking later and saving open space, we believe this will respond to the conditions that we'll have. Up to you then.
Thank you again for the record, Garrett Horstall with Kelly Engineering Group. So, I'd like to just appreciate you all having us here tonight, and just want to give a overview of the project. So, the existing lot size, as Marion said, is about seventy-six thousand square feet. It's partially within the commercial village zoning district and the residential low-density district. I have a laser pointer, but in the interest of everybody's eyes, I will keep it over here. So, you can see by the faint blue line, partially halfway across the screen, that is the zoning district boundary, and today, there are two curb cuts on the site. On the bottom left-hand portion of the page, we have the existing curb cut serving Ember, the Pizza Cold Fire Restaurant, and sort of centrally located on the site is your main access into and out of the site. And the site today is primarily fully developed at the front of the lot, and the dog leg towards the back of the lot has the existing septic field that currently operates to support the business. The curb cut on the screen left that we're looking at, there's an access easement that Ember has rights over, so you'll see further on in this presentation that that access and curb cut will be maintained as a part of this project, and still provide access to their access rights through that easement. Grading on this site is generally flat towards the north abutter. It does rise through about four feet from the rough elevation of Sunday School slab itself, and primarily the site in the front is fully paved, and as Marion noted, there are some existing nonconformities that exist on the site today relative primarily to existing parking setbacks of note. They're about three to four feet on the north-hand side of the lot line to that closest northern abutter. The existing drainage system on this site, it's all contained within the site through a series of catch basins and leaching pit systems, so nothing spills out onto Route twenty-eight, and that will continue to operate, as I'll mention further throughout, in my presentation, in a similar manner. The site, again, is served by water, electric, and gas, all from Route twenty-eight today.
If I could just stop you for a moment, because it's sometimes hard for you all to see everything. I've got printouts of the slide deck.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's fine.
So, I believe I, after you hand out the package, I just skip a couple forward to the, over the existing conditions plan, just to show the colored version of the layout plan, which I'll just walk through now. So, the proposed building is a twenty-one thousand nine hundred square foot building with twenty-eight individual condominium units housed in that facility. As mentioned, the curb cut on the left serving Ember will remain in place and intact to still provide access. The central curb cut will be closed, and there'll be a new curb cut proposed on the eastern side of the site. This is Mass. DOT jurisdiction. We do have our traffic engineer currently engaged with them for that curb cut orientation, but what we have shown here is pretty standard for what they would require, and it'll also go in tune with one of our waiver requests that I will mention further on in this presentation. So, right now, there are twenty-eight surface spaces on this layout plan. They are at the rear portion of the site, all twenty-eight spaces of these. So, you would drive into the site, further into the, towards the north, as you pass the building, to the left will be a ramp which would go into the garage on your left, and further up ahead would be the surface parking spaces to supplement the forty spaces that are underneath the building accessed via the ramp system. A dedicated trash area is provided right at the north when you walk in, and I know there was a comment, I believe, in the staff report relative to pedestrian connectivity, relative to that trash structure. There is a separate five-foot-wide walking lane to the left of the trash enclosure to provide handicap access from the handicap space that's located there, as well as pedestrian access to the other spaces throughout the site. So, as you walk towards the building, there's a main entry from the surface spaces, and there's an outdoor amenity area that's sort of kitty-cornered into the building itself. And as you can see from here, if you recall, the previous aerial image had the paving that was covering most of the front of the site. The green space in front of the site has been enhanced in the front to pull back that impervious surface, and the building as cited, you know, dimensionally complies with all zoning requirements for setbacks, and it's, of note, the increase in impervious on this site is only twenty-five hundred square feet from what exists today. A majority of that is the increase of green space through the front of the site, and with that, the existing paved surface actually decreases by seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, so there is a improvement in terms of water quality as a result of that by introducing clean runoff in terms of roof runoff instead of dirty pavement runoff. So, as we mentioned in regards to zoning, full detailed zoning legend is on this sheet. The compliance column on the right is filled with mostly yeses. There are three waivers that are requested as a part of this column, the first one being, we are requesting a waiver and reduction of parking sizes from nine by twenty to nine by eighteen. Nine by eighteen is a very commonly used parking space base throughout the industry and throughout very, every similar development of this nature, and it also tailors to reduced impervious area on the site, and almost all vehicles nowadays can safely maneuver into and out of nine by eighteen space. Secondly, we have a reduction in aisle width to twenty-four to twenty-two feet. Twenty-two feet, again, is safe travels for two-way traffic, given that this is a minimal use, it's not a shopping center where the public is coming and going, it's private, privately owned, and some visitors that may be there, so people who know, know the way around, and it's still, again, safe to maneuver in and out of. Just for reference, minimum fire lane is twenty feet, so twenty-two feet is still an acceptable aisle width. And the third one that you see in this column is relative to the driveway width measured at the right-of-way line, but your bylaw requires fifty feet due to Mass. DOT's minimum radius requirement. It's slightly over that at fifty point six. Again, that's really driven by Mass. DOT, and also of note that there is full fire apparatus access through that curb cut. I believe we have submitted a auto turn analysis for the department's largest apparatus to get into and out of the site relative to that curb cut. So, in regards to stormwater and overall drainage, septic, et cetera, the system you see here is designed as a fully compliant Mass. DEP stormwater standards, as well as the town's stormwater regulations. For reference, the blue here is the drainage network. All paved surfaces are collected by deep sump catch basins and routed through a series of drain manholes and routed to a subsurface recharge system, which is located underneath the main driveway on your way in. Of note, there is another smaller subsurface recharge system located near the driving of the garage that's only, has minimal runoff getting to it, just the runoff from the ramp, we've minimized the amount of runoff getting to that, and so that system does, is designed, you know, to provide the minimum required recharge volume as required by Mass. DEP to ensure that groundwater is not impacted as a result of the project. There's also water quality components with one-inch water quality volume that we're providing, and eighty percent TSS removal is sort of the metrics for your, for stormwater standards that are provided through here. So, this system, similar to the system that is there today, will mitigate the one-hundred year storm on the site into the ground. We have done test pits to confirm that it is, you know, coarse sand as commonly found around here to support that drainage design, and we did receive some comments from VHB as part of the stormwater peer review, which we have reviewed. None of them are... None of them are major concern to us, and we believe we can adequately address all of those comments here. The septic system, again, as noted, BSC is doing the septic design here, but it is shown schematically on this plan in the orange color. Similar to the existing location, there'll be a septic field in the sort of dogleg right portion of the back of the lot. This system will obviously have all the new Title V components, as well as the local border health requirements. And that system will be fully vetted through the border health as well and comply with all local and state regulations. And of note, there is an orange structure within the garage. So per the state plumbing code, we are required to drain all floor drains to the municipal sewer system. In this case, we have onsite septic, so we're required to have a tight tank to handle the floor drain waste, which is the reasoning for the orange box within the garage. And water, gas, and electric are all served off 28 in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen you're viewing today. And just one other note, there was another, there was two peer reviews from VHB. One related to site-specific design. I believe there might have been eight comments on that. Again, we've reviewed those comments and that you next year will have a formal response to those comments, long-advised plans, but we think they're minor in nature, and all of them can be adequately addressed. And just with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff to review the landscaping.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the boards. My name is Jeff Wyman. I'm with Campanelli. I'm also a registered landscape architect in Massachusetts. So as Marion alluded to, we made one design modification from the originally submitted landscape plans. And this came as a result of the community meeting we held with the Butters on May 1st. And that was to create a more robust landscape buffer that incorporates native species, adds a variety of plant material. In doing so, we are looking to establish low-maintenance plants that are visually appealing and fit in seamlessly with the existing landscape. I will call out, we are proposing to install approximately fifteen eighteen-to-twenty-foot arborvitae along the bank street of Butters on day one. And this is to really provide additional screening to what exists today. The focus of our landscape plan was to really save as much of the existing landscape as possible. A lot of it is mature and in good shape, in particular, the four pine trees along Route 28, as well as many of the other evergreen trees and trees along the perimeter that are shown on the plan in gray. A few other things to point out on the landscape plan. We are proposing a new six-foot height perimeter fence that we believe will complement the existing fence that exists along the west side of the property at our Bank Street of Butters. So that will encompass the entire perimeter of the site to provide additional privacy from the neighbors. We intend on saving the existing stone wall that exists today along Route 28 and implementing new sections of stone wall to match. That's really going to create that New England streetscape we are all used to seeing throughout Massachusetts. It also creates a nice visual entrance to our site, as well as the easement at Embers. As far as outdoor amenity space goes for our proposed development, we are proposing to install an exterior courtyard that is going to include outdoor grills, a fire pit, tables, pergola, and can be used, obviously, by the residents year-round. So moving on to the back portion of the site where we're proposing surface parking, you can see we carried that robust landscape buffer throughout just to really create that good visual impact. I will note that all plant species that are specified are taken directly from the Harwich Native Plant Species list. So going to the screening, we are proposing, as a result of the community meeting and some direct combos we've had with the Butters, you can see this is the type of landscaping on day one we really want to create on that bank street side, something that's mature and pretty dense to offer additional screening. The second fundamental change we've made to the plans from the original set was our site lighting plan. So we are proposing to get rid of the fourteen-foot pole lights that were originally specified. Although they were zoning compliant, they were dark sky compliant on timers and everything like that, we believe it would be more effective to implement three-and-a-half to four-foot pathway bollards along the entry drive and common walks. This will remove the concern of a Butters seeing a light source. In addition, we are providing some gooseneck fixtures at each patio and deck. I did forget to mention previously that each unit is going to have its, an individual patio and/or deck, depending on what floor you're on. But these fixtures are maximum one hundred and fifty watts. They're going to really not put off much light at all. And, yeah, in doing so, it's just less obtrusive and also will be compliant to the bylaw and provide safety and lighting as needed. So with that, I'd like to introduce Russell Dion. Russell Dion is also a partner at Campanelli and the architect on this project. So he's going to speak to the architecture of the building. And with that...
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Thank you for having us this evening. I just want to talk at first and just give you a few statistics about the building just to cover. I know we've talked about the building being a combination of two and three stories in twenty-eight units. We have eleven units on the first floor, eleven units on the second floor, and six units on the third floor. The unit mix throughout the building will be three one-bedroom units that range about twelve hundred square feet. There'll be eighteen two-bedroom units that will range from fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. Several of those will have a two-bedroom plus a study den. And then there'll be seven three-bedroom units ranging from eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet. The building itself, as mentioned, will provide the required parking plus visitor parking. We have forty spaces dedicated under the building through a secured garage. So every homeowner will be granted at least one secured parking space. The system of how to determine the remainder of the spaces is yet to be determined. So we'll go through that. So that's the statistics of what's inside the building from a unit count. The intent of our project is to create a luxury condominium for residents desiring to live in an HOA environment, modern living, new construction, polythere of amenities, high security, and low maintenance. With that, we've studied many amenities that would go into a project like this and would be attractive to a buyer. Secured garage parking operated via your telephone or device from your car as you enter the property. EV charging, we have here a minimum, I think it's eleven spaces, Garrett? We have eleven EV charging stations. And certainly, if a resident needs more, we will have some surplus power to do that. We have interior storage units within the building, central elevator service from the parking all the way to the housing level, secured mail and package rooms. As Garrett had indicated, we have a dedicated delivery slot, parking slot in the project. No parking and delivery on the front of the building. We've talked about the grilling terraces and the fire pit. Be fitted out with a fitness center and flex studio, bike storage, kayak storage, some common rooms to be used for common gatherings, conference room for live and work spaces, and some game room opportunities. Relative to the architecture, we spent some time going throughout the Cape and mostly here in Harwich. And we tried to find many elements of architecture that seem quite memorable to Cape Cod shingle-style architecture. And some of those things are, of course, shingled siding. This project will be stained wood single siding, patterned shingles. And I don't know if you'll be clear in the renderings, but in the gable peaks facing Main Street, we have a little bit of a wave pattern. We have arborways on the left and right-hand side of the facade. For one is the main entrance to the building with a garden lattice surrounding the arborway. The other one is a walkway leading people to the back part of the property. We have projecting bay windows with metal roofing. We have balconies with patterned railings. We have rounded roof elements that enhance the scale of a shingle-style building and give it a little bit of nostalgic character. We have double-hung windows with traditional mullion patterns, cornice trim and an occasional flower box. We have round and Oreo windows, patio doors. And as Jeff indicated, the front of the building will have a stone wall that's there today, and it will be enhanced and replaced at the center entrance, and then enhanced and replaced as you go into the Embers parking lot. These images on the screen I just talked about a bit, and you can't quite see, it's a little faint. But as Jeff had indicated, the front of the property is, has four large evergreen trees, which our botanist has looked at and deemed them in decent, good condition. And they should be able to, they're further, they're far enough away from the excavation of the foundation, they won't be unimpacted with construction, although we'll do every measure to protect them. Could you go to the next slide, Jeff? So the architectural intent is to really address a series of scales from Main Street. From the left and from the right, you can see the pedestrian arborway that one walks through on the left to get to the main entrance, one walks through on the right to follow the entrance drive down to the back. The beginnings of the building on the left and on the right are two stories. And then, as it moves towards the middle, there's a two-and-a-half-story portion where there's, on the third floor, there's an open-air porch to the unit that is there. And in the middle, for about twenty-nine percent of the facade, is a three-story facade, which houses two units. This is a rendering on Mass Route 28 heading west. So there's our driveway curb that you would see. There's your stone wall. There's some new landscaping pieces there. You can see the four tall evergreens that are in front of the building. The evergreen trees in the rendering are actually shown a little bit smaller than they are actually there. There's a photograph to the lower right where you can see the actual scale of those trees. As I had indicated, the taller of the, two of the four trees are forty-two feet tall. The other two are thirty-six. The top of the ridge line of the roof here is thirty-nine feet. The eve line, the gutter line, is at thirty-three feet. So the wall is shorter than the trees. I just wanted to point that out. The other thing that you can see a bit in this picture is, across the front facade, we have stepped the building seven different times to break up the scale of the building. It goes in and out sometimes two or three feet, other times twelve or fourteen feet to take a sense of scale from the two to two-and-a-half to three-story and place that in an assembly that is easy on the eye. Next slide, Jeffrey. This is a view going easterly on Main Street.
Can I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure, please.
Because for the purpose of everybody's looking at the material on this screen, the aspect ratio of this is off. So I don't know, Caleb, is there any way we could adjust that to the projector? Because what we're seeing and what I see in the main screen here and the material that we have is distributed in more like a sixteen-nine format. This looks like a four-by-five.
It is off, and I appreciate you raising it.
And so what that does, just so everybody who's, and people who are making comments, making comments on a distortion that's accentuating the height of the building. So let's, I just want, before we go further, I'd rather get that clarified, if possible.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There we go. Thank you, appreciate it, Caleb.
So as we talked about, this is the view going east on Mass 28, and you can see the evergreen trees. There's the entrance to Embers there, and there's our front door to our facility there in the corner. Could you go to the next slide, Jeff? So these are the elevations of the building. And the elevations of the building, the Main Street elevation shows the existing evergreens, the two on the left that are forty-two feet high, the two on the right that are thirty-six in proportion to the building. And then there's nine smaller spruce trees that are of substantial maturity in the site, which also are intended to remain. And they range from a height of fourteen to sixteen feet, as you can see there. They come up to just under the second-floor window line. And then on the left and right, we're complementing it with additional landscaping to keep the vegetated edge to the street. The elevation below, the front elevation is the rear elevation. And the area on the right is the most rear. The area on the left steps back about seventy-five feet from the rear elevation. But the area on the left is a three-story elevation. And the area on the left, excuse me, the area on the right is a three-story elevation, which then, as it proceeds in the recessed area towards the street, it steps back down to a two-story view. As Jeff indicated, on the right-hand side, we have met with the director Butters, and we've had some conversations, and I'm sure we'll have some more conversations with those nice people, that we've proposed sixteen-to-twenty-foot different types of species of arborvitae to go there. And you can see that those trees go over the second-floor window in a straight-on elevational view. And you'll see in a perspective view, they actually screen the building quite a bit. Next slide, please. The top elevation, this is the easterly elevation, which faces the driveway. So you can see the two-story elevation of the various units and the arborway and the balconies and the various patio doors. The facade in the back, which is three stories, sets back about a hundred and twenty feet from this elevation, which is shown in a faint illustration. And on the right-hand side, you can see those additional arborvitae that we've proposed for the project to screen the building on the far backside. The lower elevation is the feature elevation that faces the majority of the Butters, okay? And we've met with all three of these folks. And this also faces Embers on the far right. So there's the entrance elevation towards Main Street, the two-story piece. As you move back to eighty-five to ninety-five feet from the main road, the facade moves up to a three-story elevation as it moves to the back. And on the far-left-hand side are the additional screens that we've put in. Next slide, please. This is a view from Bank Street, okay? This is from the mailbox area in front of the Condominium Association that's there. We actually met with several of these Butters just prior to this meeting. Thank you for your time. And there's quite a bit of existing vegetation that's there. And it helps our project, it helps the Butters as well. The photograph on the left was taken not too long ago, and a lot of the deciduous trees hadn't budded yet. They are budded in the illustration. Also, over the rooftops there is the, you can see some of the additional landscaping that Jeff has proposed to screen the building that will be installed. And he did say day one, but I want to reiterate, when we commence construction, the arborvitae that are intended to be screening the Butters would go in on day one. So the construction could take anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months, and they would have fourteen to eighteen months of maturity. They wouldn't go in on the tail end of the project. Next slide, please. I'll go back just one. This is another view, a few houses... This is another view, a few houses down on Bank Street. There's some existing vegetation there that you can see in the photograph on the lower left. There's an abut that has quite mature arborvitae planting, which would be similar to the species that we would be providing. And we would be providing, as Jeff said, anywhere from 12 to 15 or 16, whatever we feel is going to adequately provide the proper screening for the building. Next slide, please. The other thing that has been raised in a couple of conversations is really the comparison of the size of this building as it relates to the Melrose across the street. With no disrespect to the Melrose or any of its ownership or occupants, when we compare this building statistically, they just have very different numbers. The footprint of 606 Development Proposal is 21,900 square feet. The footprint of the Melrose is 28,200 square feet. The Melrose footprint is 23% larger than this building at 6,300 feet. On the facade, we've overlaid the Melrose facade as it relates to our facade. And what you can see here is the Main Street facade of 606, our development proposal, is 177 feet long. The facade of the Melrose, which we're all comfortable driving by, is 208 feet, okay? So this facade is certainly almost 20% larger. It's just a statistical fact. The gray building on the left and right is the larger facade of the Melrose as it's overlaid with the proposed building. The roof line of the Melrose sits at, I can't quite read the number there, but I believe it's about 32 feet. The roof line of our project in the center lies at 39 feet, but at the two-story piece, it lies at 29 feet, okay? So it just gives you a sense of scale. The other difference is, and again, no disrespect issued here, there's not a landscape buffer in front of the Melrose to soften its view. This landscape that you see today will be there in the future, will be enhanced. And I believe we've covered just about everything on the architecture for now. I believe there'll be a few more questions, but we can address those as we go. Okay?
All right. So to wrap, let's get back. To wrap up with four questions, I do want to emphasize particularly the requirements of the Site Plan Review Special Permit related to whether this project is adverse to the neighborhood and whether the project, the specific site is appropriate, is an appropriate location for the structure and the use and the conditions. Those are the aspects of this project that we should focus on.
Can you speak louder, please?
Certainly, I'll try. Those are the aspects of the project that the planning board, I believe, will focus on. There's an emotion with this project because Sunday School is a popular, beloved place. And the choice, if the economic conditions continue with this branch of Sunday School, is not to keep it going indefinitely. Something will change. And so what we've proposed is something that fits within the bylaw, does not require zoning relief, and we believe does not adversely affect the neighborhood and is appropriate for the neighborhood. I'd like to sum up, in fact, I think, when you're thinking about what's adverse to the neighborhood, it doesn't mean, to my belief, and what the case law says, it doesn't mean a slight negative effect, or you'd rather have this than that. It has to be something that's quantifiable. There are cases that look to negative consequences, such as increased noise, traffic, parking, or safety concerns, physical issues on the site. There are other cases, they're more rare, that look to a diminution in value. We believe in all these aspects, this project would not be an adverse project to the neighborhood. And in fact, it's an appropriate project, given the zoning, and given particularly the multifamily zoning and what the town of Harwich passed in 2020 as multifamily zoning, which provided bigger buffers and a height of 40 feet, and no limit on the building coverage, but a limit on site coverage. And that is the path that we had to follow in designing this project. We believe, and some of these have been touched on, but I'd like to emphasize these as we get to the questions and comments, that there are clear benefits here for what's proposed. Number one, it's providing housing in the Harwich Village Transition Area from commercial to residential, with the covered parking, and it's walkable to the Harwich Village. You'll hear from, I think, in the letters of a person who reached out to us, saying this is exactly the kind of project that she's interested in moving into. She's a homeowner with a larger home and wants to move into a community like this. One of the, we are not applying under the overlay district, but one of the emphasis is, one of the things that the overlay district emphasizes is taking parking out of the front area along Route 28 and putting it behind structures. That is something, there are two ways in which the current conditions, parking conditions, are pre-existing non-conforming. And one is, there are over 20 parking spaces that are in front of the existing building. And two, the parking setbacks, which should be 10 feet on all sides, on the rear, the northern section, they're about 3.9 feet, very, very close to the other property owners. And on the side, it's about, towards Ember, it's in places 4.5 feet. So all of those buffers would be more highly vegetated, more thoughtfully vegetated, and of the correct dimensions. We also want to mention that it is difficult to estimate what these units will sell for because they're not built, and we don't know what the conditions are going to be in two to three years. But we estimate conservatively, looking at the other condominium units in the area, particularly the newer ones, and we estimate that the tax increase in property taxes here will increase from roughly $5,700, which is what Sunday School pays for this site. It would net, be a net increase of $190,000. And we think that's conservative. We've been talking back and forth among the team. I'm sticking with the conservative number on that.
What's your comment, buddy? What's your question? Listen.
I also want to say, and this is probably one of the more important things, in terms of impact, this is a very different use from the Sunday School use. I really want, and I'm excited for you all to hear from the traffic expert, because what we've seen from looking at sales in the summer, peak days, peak hours, we can break it down. And here, a residential use is hundreds fewer ins and outs over a day in the summer, when this section, as we all know, of Harwich Port, right around Snow and Road area, this section is very sensitive to traffic. I mean, there's, there's going to be many fewer ins and outs, and it's not just by the tens, it will be by the hundreds in those peak times. And so that's something that, as a whole, looking at this project, when you're thinking about the impacts of the project on the specific neighborhood and the greater neighborhood, we think that that would be a significant impact, and a positive impact on the streetscape. I think at this time, we welcome any questions, well, I think, actually Christine may be speaking next, but then we welcome any questions that you all have and are ready to listen and ready to answer as we can.
Thank you so much, Marion. I think we'll go to the staff report now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, Caleb, would you mind switching up the PowerPoint? Okay, include, oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Included in your packet is the materials from the applicant, in addition to not only site plans, architectural landscaping, and preliminary subject designs, in addition to some traffic directional, internal parking layout schematics, and the architectural renderings. There was also a project narrative, as well as a reason of summary that was submitted by the applicant. Yep?
Could you move your mic?
Sure. Sorry about that. I was just going over the materials that had been submitted by the applicant thus far. And again, the applicant's agent is Marion Rose. The landowner is SSH Board LLC, Robert DiMarco. And the project is located at 606 Route 28, Harwich Port. And the zoning districts are within the commercial village, village-commercial overlay district, as well as the residential low-density zoning district. The lot is a split lot, is a split lot, and the development type is residential condominium development of 28 units. And the project, the proposed project is to demolish a 1,862-square-foot existing building, and that will be replaced with 28-unit residential condominium development with an underground parking facility. The garage, the garage and the building will total 81,975 square feet in gross floor area and 59,251 in net floor area. And just to clarify for net floor area, that does not include the underground garage or the outdoor patio areas. The project includes 68 parking spaces, and the proposed footprint of the building, again, is 21,927 square feet, with 3.5 stories equalling 39.7 feet in height, in building height. And the proposed condo, the proposed residential condominium units, there are, there are thre, I'm sorry, I had the wrong notes. There are three one-bedroom units, two 18-bedroom units, as well as three, as well as seven three-bedroom units. The square footage ranges for the one-bedroom unit, 1,200, just over 1,200 square feet. For the two-bedroom units, the range is 1,593 square feet to about just over 2,300 square feet. And for the three-bedroom units, just under 2,000 square feet and just under 2,100 square feet in terms of square footage ranges. And for the parking spaces, the parking requirements for the town of Harwich is 55. The project proposes 68 units of parking. 40 units will be in the, in the parking garage underneath the building, along with 29 storage units. 28 parking spaces will be to the rear and to the exterior. The applicant has requested five waivers, and I can also go over just some of the PowerPoint and some of the information that the applicant had provided. So for the town of Harwich, just to give some context, so along Route 28 in the project is right in the middle. There's a red dot, it's a little hard to see, but this is downtown Harwich Port, with Bank Street to the west, and the rest of downtown Harwich Port continuing to the west, and Route 28 and Freeman Street to the east. So just to give a level of intensity of development that's within Harwich Port, just to give a, just to give a presentation and an overlook of the downtown area. So this is the proposed site with existing conditions with the Sunday School. And if you'll notice, to the bottom left, there is the easement to Ember, and then in the middle, there's an existing curb cut that will, that curb cut will be moved over to the east side of the property. Again, I also did want to note, some of the questions that we had asked is whether or not the scale and the building size does fit Harwich Center. And the building to the south is the Melrose building, just to give some context of an And so again, this is the Harwich zoning area for the commercial village overlay, as well as the residential low-density. The property is highlighted in red. And again, this is an outline of existing conditions with, with the Sunday School and the existing parking as it, again, existing conditions, sorry. This is also the proposed site plan with the building. It's a little bit hotter to see with the black and white photos, but on the next, for the landscaping, this is a little bit better in terms of the site of the building location, as well as the proposed curb cut to the east side of the property off of Route 28. The parking is to the rear. The round circles are the existing vegetation and landscaping. So again, this is the directional parking for the underground parking lot, just to give you an idea. We have Steve Rhodes, our VHB traffic consultant and stormwater consultant, who will also give a brief overview of his report as well, and in addition to some comments of the parking layout. These are the height elevations that were submitted to as part of the application, the front elevation off of Route 28 and the size of the building. It does meet the zoning requirements for multifamily use at just under 40 feet. And there's also the rear elevation at the bottom photo, or, I'm sorry, at the bottom So again, these are the side elevations to the east and the west as part of the application, as part of the applicant's proposal. So that, that concludes the presentation, but I did raise some questions for the board to consider. When the town adopted the multifamily zoning bylaw in 2020, the zoning provision, as it's written, does not include what was presented at the town meeting, which the board and the planning board really had met, had met to address the needs of year-round workforce housing and rental housing opportunities. So I do think, as the board considers the use of the, of this proposal, to bear that in mind. And my other question- And my other question is what restrictions, if any, will there be on short-term rentals? And the impact to the surrounding neighbors in terms of any noise with the outdoor patios, in addition to the use of the rooftop? And again, in terms of scale and building layout, I did cite some information relative to the assessors. This will be within five of the largest buildings in, in the town of Harwich. And so it is, it does become a character. There is, it does become a character issue for Harwich Port. And that is something for the board to consider in terms of your rendering and your evaluation. And I did have several other questions, but we can, we can defer those. It's also highlighted in your staff report. I will also say, from an economic development perspective, it is important in terms of walkable communities. I think the applicant has made efforts to address that. Also to identify and include several aspects of the overlay village, I'm sorry, of the overlay district, in terms of putting the parking to the rear, moving the building closer to Route 28, as well as locating the septic system to the rear as well. In terms of town and taxes, this will be a revenue generator for the town. And I do think tax generation, property tax increases is also a fact, a positive for the town to consider. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it over to you. Or, I'm sorry, with Steve Rhodes from VHB.
Thank you, Christine. I'd actually like to start with my colleague Kelly Siri online, if she could get share screenability. She'll run through the, a quick overview of our stormwater comments, and I'll take the rest quickly from there.
Hello. Can you just confirm, you can hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. And I'll share my screen, just to have the plans up. Good evening. I'm Kelly Siri, a water resource engineer at VHB. The VHB completed a review of the provided materials for store, looking at stormwater and, you know, complying with general stormwater engineering practices, and also against the stormwater regulations in Harwich, which the application is required to apply for under the Board of Selectmen. So to summarize our comments, can you see my screen?
No.
Oh, okay. Let's see if this works. Any, any luck there?
No.
Nothing yet.
Okay.
Caleb, do you have to give permission? She's the guardian.
All right. Here we go.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, that should work. Cool. So this is the drainage, the sewer and drainage plants that were provided. We had a few comments on recharge system number two, which is at the entrance of the parking garage. The bottom of the stone is at elevation zero. We're asking the applicant to provide test pit information to confirm soil information and separation from groundwater, specifically for this location, but also for recharge system number one at the driveway entrance. The landscaping plans showed proposed trees in the location of recharge system number one, which may cause conflicts with the recharge system as the trees mature and grow roots. We recommend the applicant revise the plantings to avoid the recharge system. There are two proposed area drains in the center of the site, near the proposed patio, that will be receiving flow from impervious surface and should have pretreatment to, provided prior to the recharge system number one to meet the required 44% TSS reduction from sites with rapid infiltration rates, which we, the applicant says that this is based on GIS data. But again, the test pits should help confirm that. Additionally, the recharge system number one should be updated on the plan set just to call out the separator row, which would provide pretreatment in that system itself. And then we had a few comments on the hydroCAD models provided for the stormwater system, both in existing and proposed conditions, with some updates needed for the catchment areas and time of concentration values to reflect the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. The one larger modeling comment we had for the proposed model is regarding the new parking lot in the north section of the site. The hydroCAD model notes that this area flows to a low point at the boundary of the, at this like southeast corner of the site, at the property boundary. So that low point isn't modeled in the hydroCAD to, and should be modeled to show that there is no flow going into neighboring properties, which is what was described in the stormwater report. And that's the summary of the stormwater comments. So I'll hand it over to Steve to cover the rest.
Thanks, Kelly. So starting with landscaping, we noted there's a really robust landscaping plan proposed. We just wanted to make note that there's a planning board policy to consider the use of native species. So we just would like the applicant and the planning board to consider those where possible in the final planting plan. The applicant notes there are going to be 11 parking spaces, which will be EV-ready charging spaces in the garage. We're just asking for a little more information on their plan to how they're going to install those charging stations in the garage for the next meeting. We'd like them to provide an operations description for trash deliveries and move-in, move-out activity. And to pair with that, we'd like to see some turning movement diagrams for those vehicles. It sounds like fire vehicle movements have been produced, so we'd just like to take a look at those as well. These are all things we can do between now and the next mission, working with the applicant and their engineers. And we noted that the, we took a quick look at the traffic memo. Haven't done the deep dive into it yet. That'll be coming. But we noted that for the intersection site distance, looking to the east on Route 28, there's a stopping site distance provided, but not intersection site distance. So we just, we request the applicant and the engineer consider any remedies to that situation to, that could improve that. We recognize the site conditions along Route 28 are potentially limiting to that, but just wanted to make that request to see the applicant's response to that. And that is all we had for our highlights of our comments.
Thank you, Steve. So we've heard from the applicant. We've heard from the town. Let's hear from the board, please.
I have a number of questions, if, if the chair, if you will allow. First, starting with the driveway. I know there was, there was talk from, I believe, the civil engineer who mentioned that you would have key access in. Were you referring to into the underground garage or from directly off of the street?
Just to the underground garage.
Okay. Second, fire department. Would that be this, how will the fire department, police department have access to that? Will they, will that be, will they have an emergency access that they'd be able to get in, in the event that they needed to?
Well, we will meet with the, certainly the police and fire, but the typical solution is a Knox box at every door and location of the building, which would be whatever standard that Harwich does, we will, of course, need to do. But we're very familiar with the Knox box system, and that's what we anticipate.
Because my third question on that was, you had said that fire could get through, but did that also mean getting into the underground garage as opposed, in a truck versus? Or did you just mean in the driveway and the parking areas?
It would just be the driveway and the parking areas.
Okay, so I guess I would ask for a follow-up with the fire department, that they were comfortable with that? And if they would need to, need to be able to get some kind of equipment downstairs because of also the charging, if there's a potential of charging?
We're all set with it. We're not going to drive a truck into the parking garage, but we'll have access if we need to get in. And yes, we use a Knox box system, so that would be fine for access.
And would that, is that still true, chief, if they're doing charging stations in the basement as opposed to having?
Yeah, the fire code is going to cover what we need for requirements. We're not going to bring a truck down there. There'll be a standpipe system or something, so we can get hoses plus sprinklers. So we should be all set with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The other question I had, there is currently no sidewalk in front of the property right now. Is the, are you anticipating putting the sidewalk, putting a sidewalk in that stretch to come from the driveway to west?
No, we are not. The sidewalk project is all for the other side of the street. That the state is doing. And so, and I think that's kind of unusual, not to have sidewalks on either side of the street. But because of the particular situation on that part of Route 28, it's just on one side. What we are doing is, there's a little, there's a front door. It's on the corner on the Ember side. And so there's a pathway from that to the new crosswalk. And so people will be able to access the sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Through that crosswalk?
Yeah.
That was the reason for my question, was the, was the crosswalk? And then, just curious, on the, it looks like coming from the back parking lot, I see that your pedestrian walkway, and it looks like you have a crosswalk to come into the building side across the driveway that will go underneath into the garage. What's the, how far is that from that corner? If somebody's coming in from off of Route 28 and pulling left? I'm just curious what that distance is.
Roughly 100 feet.
Okay. I'm good for now.
Good.
Questions? Christine, our staff report, does that go, is that public as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I just want to add a comment that was in our staff report, so everybody hears it.
Thank you.
So in 2020, the town adopted the multifamily zoning bylaw with the following explanation devoted. Board of Selectmen met with Planning Board in 2019 to discuss the need for the creation of workforce housing and the need for rental properties. This bylaw is a culmination of the effort to modernize the practical zoning bylaw to promote, that promotes health, safety, and welfare of the residents. I think that piece was not included, that the intent was this workforce housing and the need for rental properties. This seems to handle, seems to be within the spirit of the law that was passed, but I just wanted to give that context. The other comment I have in terms, I know we're going to have a whole night on traffic. I get that. But you are moving the entrance, or proposing, you're trying to move it to the east.
Correct.
Therefore, you're moving it closer to the intersection of Freeman, Snowin Road, and 28. And from my just initial discussion and look, this is not to be quoted. It is listed, that intersection is listed in the top 5% crash clusters on the MassDOT Highway Safety Database.
Right. May I respond through the chair?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. We hear you. And I think it's going to be helpful to have the whole context of this with the traffic report and the peer review, so that it's not just us saying it, it's the peer review as well. But the kind of traffic is going to be night and day different because of the number of trips and because of the current use has focused traffic at exactly the wrong season, the summer, at exactly the wrong times, the peak evening hours. And the residential use, as you'll see, will be spread out through the day. And it's much, 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 much less.
I, I understand your point. I know we're going to have a whole night on traffic. I just want to point that out. And I, I was also schooled by my late father that no one takes a left turn on 28 in the summer, ever.
And they are now.
They make 12 right turns to not take a left. So that's a longstanding position.
I live in wealth fleet. I understand.
Okay. Also, just to put this in context, we've just finished town meeting. Everyone had the warrant. I hope everybody came. This tax increase that you're talking about, 5,700 to 190,000, correct? That amount of increase, while significant, if you go back and look at our warrant and everything we just passed, and looked at the capital outlay budget, where we review everything over $50,000, that increase wouldn't buy, wouldn't be a down payment on a fire truck. It is a very insignificant amount. It looks big at one point, and then it gets a lot smaller when you look at the entire town budget. So just for perspective, it looks like a lot of money. It is a lot of money. But how do we spend all the rest of the money? That's my point. So with that, I just wanted to put that on the record, since I know we're going to have lots of other nights together. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the time?
I have one question. I think Christine brought it up in some of her notes. But could you speak to the roof deck component of the project?
Certainly. I think I might have Russ come back up and speak to this.
The roof deck component, just give an overview and any, you know, kind of size and noise management kind of thing.
Sure. So the project is proposed to have two roof decks, okay, for common areas for the residents. And the reason why we made the choice to do two is because we wanted to keep assemblies to a limited amount, okay? Roof decks will not have open railings. They will have, they, they have actually camouflaged inside the roof. So the roof will come up, the appropriate code compliance of three foot six. And then there'll be a ridge line, which will probably be about three foot eight. And then it will drop down, and there'll be some screening and some planters, and the floor of the roof deck will be there. So any furniture or any equipment that may be on the roof deck for a yoga class or anything like that would be impossible to be seen from any location. Anybody sitting at a table, dining, or, or having a conversation with a colleague would also not be able to be seen. If someone wanted to stand up and look out into Main Street or look out into the back of the property, they would be able to see that, of course. So that's the intent. It's basically meant as an opportunity, there's not a lot of landscaping. We do have the plaza that you saw down on the ground with some grilling apparatuses and another seating area. But it's an, it's an opportunity to give the residents a piece of their own backyard with privacy from both the existing abusers and privacy for the new residents.
If I could add, just in terms of the two communal roof decks, those are both on the state highway Route 28 side of the building.
Great.
Thank you.
Just one other question, since I'm anticipating it would be asked by the public and we can get it out. At your public meeting, you did give an estimate of what these units would sell for on the market. Could you put that on the record for us?
Sure.
Sure. I mean, what I, to quote me at that meeting, we don't know what we're going to charge for those units.
But you did give it.
No, no, let me just finish, please, okay? What we said was, it's going to take us some time to permit this project and construct it, and market is going to bear what it's going to bear at that time. It could go down, it could go up. We all know that everything's changing. We did say that a one-bedroom would sell for anywhere between 900,000 and a million dollars. In the two and three bedrooms, pending on market, would go from a million dollars to a million one, and maybe a million two. But
And that three-bedroom?
It, it's in that range. The three-bedroom would be in that 1,200,000 range.
I think what we said, just to clarify at the meeting, is that three bedrooms are harder to, to mark to
You don't have comparable.
Right. It's harder to figure that out, so we're holding off.
I just want to get that on the record, since I heard people asking it in the background, and I thought we should.
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
And if I could, just while we were talking about the roof decks, I know from my experience on other projects, that lighting and noise might be issues there as well. And so to my mind, this is, this is an area where people, the people, the other people in the building are going to have the same interest in maintaining the Harwich zoning, or the, sorry, the Harwich noise bylaw. And so to my mind, this is, this is an area where people, the people, the other people in the building are going to have the same interest in maintaining the harsh zoning, sorry, the harsh noise bylaw and the light bylaw. There's, it's, I believe it will be self policed. There's also the bylaws that if there is a problem, someone can complain. But that plus the way we're having conforming to the light bylaw, lighting on the exterior of the building is also a response.
Harry, please. I suspect a lot of, some of the questions I have will be answered as a result of this discussion from the public. So I just want to make sure that there will be another, as a matter of, 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 of protocol, there'll be another opportunity for the board to ask questions. Because I may, I'd rather let them get to it. They all came down here and, and sacrificed their evening. So there's no reason for me to ask questions that they're going to ask. If at the end I still have anything, I'd like to reserve the right to bring it up again.
I'm with you.
Okay. Then I have nothing. Welcome back, Marion.
So anybody else on from the board want to go on the record at this point? It's 8:22. I'd like to then open up to the public and ask you to please go to the podium, give us your name and your address. And if you haven't already signed in, please sign in and we're eager to hear from you. And that invitation extends to our guests in the small room over here. Please come on in if you have questions.
Good evening. Ben Warshaw, 8 Lakeway Lane. I also submitted this letter in writing earlier yesterday, but would like to read it out in person.
Yeah, I will allow that first one, but we have a full sheet of letters and I'm not, we're not going to, I'd rather hear from people. We have everything. It will go on the record. So if you have written something, well, it's, it's already in the record, it's been read.
Understood.
As an opening salvo, let's go with this.
So I'd like to express my conditional support for the proposed residential development. Currently home to Sunday School, my favorite ice cream shop and a cherished part of our identity. Come from a house divided, everyone else is team schoolhouse, but I've always been team Sunday School. But more to the issue at hand, our town is facing a crisis. People my age and my generation feel this a lot more often, I would say, than, than most. Buying a house is really hard. I did it myself. I was damn lucky to be able to do so. But our housing shortage isn't just about numbers, it's about people. Year-round residents, local workers, young families, the people who love this town are being priced out of the place that they call home. That's unacceptable. They're essential to our community and without them, the charm of our town that we work so hard to protect ceases to exist in an entirely different way. No person, family, business, charity or government is solely responsible for the problem that we're currently facing and none of them can solve it alone. We, as a community, share a responsibility to be a part of, of the solution. And that requires creativity, collaboration and everyone's least favorite C word, compromise. We can't keep saying no to every project because it changes something. Harwich will change no matter what. We can either shape that change or let it happen to us. This project is a chance to add housing thoughtfully in a location that's already familiar with seasonal traffic and commercial activity while delivering new housing units into an area that desperately needs them. The developers, as you've heard tonight, are part of this community. They've supported Sunday School with their hard hours scooping ice cream and with their wallets over the past few years. They've shown a willingness to include affordable units in other developments in other towns and I think it's time to step up again and do something similar here. Rather than asking for units to be reserved as affordable housing units that don't appreciate like other housing and effectively feel like a second-class housing unit, I would like to ask the developers to commit a minimum of $500,000 out of their profits from this project towards down payment assistance in grant form for local families. That would be enough to help at least three, and if they up that number, ideally five or six, you know, around 20% of the development, help at least three households buy into this community for the long term. That kind of investment does more than satisfy a zoning requirement. It creates roots. And to the point that was raised on the tax revenue, the $190,000 wouldn't cover a 20% down payment on a million dollar unit. So I think we really have a lot of work to do to help people access this kind of housing. I also urge the planning board to insist on design choices that reflect Harwich's character. The Cape-style architecture, green space, landscaping that blends with the neighborhood. A project like this should feel like it belongs here, not just because it technically can, but because it adds something meaningful to the fabric of our town. Early drawings indicate the developer has adhered to local character and resulted in what I believe is a beautiful piece of architecture. That's only my opinion. Done right, this project can honor our past, meet the needs of the present and help secure a more sustainable future for the Harwich community. I encourage the board and the community to seize that opportunity and to hold the developer to a standard that reflects our shared values. I would love to see something like this be a model of how Harwich grows, both with intention, with care for our community members and with heart. Property developers like these folks have an opportunity to do well while doing good. And it's a shame that more don't seem to prioritize this. Without a meaningful contribution of this nature and scale, I cannot in good conscience support the project. But should something of that nature be offered, I would enthusiastically support the project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hudson. I live at Ridgeport Drive, Harwich Port. I looked at the architectural rendering and I almost threw up. I think this is a horrible looking project. It, it looks like it should be in a city, not in a town. And if you want to change the character of the town to look like a city, you're going to make a big change here. And I'm opposed to it and I think, I sense a lot of people have the same kind of feeling. Building is too close to the street, probably because of the confines of the, of the thing. It's not the same as the Melrose. The Melrose is set back quite a bit. The architecture looks like it belongs in downtown Newark, New Jersey. Yes, it has some set things. There's some good points to it, but I think it's totally out of character. And I think that it would adversely affect the neighborhood because it, it just doesn't belong. I mean, I, I don't know how you define exactly an objection to the type of architecture. But I'm standing here saying, I don't like it. And I don't think it, I think it adversely affects the town. I mean, if we had a statue of Adolf Hitler, you would probably say, okay, that's not appropriate. It adversely affects the character of the town. And I'm not trying to make a comparison, but at some point you have to, you have to say to yourself, does this, does this adversely, does this belong here looking like this? I don't think so. And I'd like you to think about that carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
I've been here a long time. My, my dad had the first boat in Whichmer Harbor.
Your dad and my, my grandfather sailed together, I remember.
And I haven't seen anything proposed like this. This just, it doesn't belong Cape Cod.
Thank you, Jim.
How you doing? Thank you. My name's Mike Heffernan. I'm from 20 Freeman Street. Most neighbors feel these meanings were planned when many residents had not, not yet returned from their winter places and his voices aren't going to be heard. Our neighborhood has worked very hard to keep the historic village feel and the town has always shown restraint in allowing building that did not have that same magic feel, village feel. And that's the magic we love. We all know that retaining our history and historic integrity is paramount, which is why this project is so wrong. There is no historic character to this architecture and the height is so out of character for the rest of the town. I do not think it is fair to compare it to the Melrose Inn, which is historic 1880s captain house, run as a classy inn for 20, 60 years. And owners going out of their way to keep the charm of the hitched roof. Condos have been approved in Harwich Port, but you don't see them. They blend in. They're not a distraction. Because of my expertise in landscape, I'm confused by seeing square footage of approximation. Is it 76,000? Is it 60,000? How would the plans change? A new survey of this land might appease butters who are unclear about property lines, some that have been maintaining them for 50 years. The current land plant, landscape plants are a joke. There's no landscape plants as privacy borders. They plan to use fences and a couple of spruces. Most of those plants are on other people's properties. It is, is, and is this a proposed back parking lot in a historic area? And does this affect the plans? This historic area should be used to plant a large screen of plants to protect, protect neighbors who are very close. And it may be a good use for a dog park for tenants. It should be used to protect our neighborhoods so parking should not be allowed in this historic area. The town landscape requirements 325-43 offer great guidelines for plants that are important for privacy and to protect neighbors from parking lot lights, headlights and secondhand carbon monoxide. Please make a plant screen a mandatory part of this project. The 68 spot, the 68 spot request feels like a plan to help these condos sell as a VRBO hotel with parking. And are the VRBO REITs going to be buying these things? To comply with Harwich Port parking zoning, this proposed building requires 55 spots. I think that is fair. I think the town reached this number with careful planning to prevent this rental model from taking over. With 55 spots, there is more green space and a better border to protect neighbors. Also, the islands they want to get rid of are important to absorb heat coming off the parking lots and also provide more protection from headlights and taillights. Many villages on the Cape and islands have strict codes to prevent this sort of building that can change this, change this quaint village magic, which is why we are all here. We are opposed to this building plan. Thank you for providing this opportunity for me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Heffernan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Flynn. My name's Peter Gorey. I live at 226 Sisson Road in Harwich Center. Lifelong resident of Harwich and my grandparents had a home on Snowin Road for 60 years. I have to rise today in what is certainly a dissenting opinion and a minority one from what I can tell. But I wanted to flip the script a little bit and talk about what is happening here, which is we're talking about zoning that exists. Zoning that exists that allows for multifamily and the clarification made vis a vis the warrant is important, but so does zoning. I will preface my further comments to say, none of these comments reflect my role, which is currently on hiatus on the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee. I attend many meetings in this room year-round and I love that everyone's here. And there is no competition for whose opinions are more important, Washa Shores, summer residents of which I have been in year-round. That is not what I'm seeking to punctuate here. What I am seeking to punctuate is that this zoning process was conducted in the light of day for years. And it was an upzoning of the downtown. And I personally think there was a massive failure. And the upzoning should have ended at the Sunday School property when it goes to Freeman Street. That's something that this board and our town meeting can fix. Our Local Comprehensive Planning Committee can help to fix with your participation. But I would urge you to participate year-round and I'm not, again, casting any aspersions on anyone. But as evidenced by the, by the meeting attendance here and the meeting attendance earlier in May, we really would love to have you participate year-round. Because we've been going through meetings on Pine Oaks Village, I know what the subject matter is this evening, but it's very important vis a vis civic dialogue. Pine Oaks Village is 250 units with 300-plus beds. The debacle that was proposed next to my house was 96 units, which I used to say, and thankfully it was not successful. It was a convenient way to not say 100, but it was 165 bedrooms, okay? These projects are happening and being proposed throughout this town, luxury and otherwise. Specifics, if I may. Like the prior speaker, I think the first speaker, I care very deeply about the affordability crisis here in Harwich. I participate regularly. I've worked all my career before owning a small business in Orleans, which I hope you still will, will shop at. I worked my entire professional career in urban planning for the city of Boston and commercial real estate. When people buy properties, notwithstanding the challenges that they've had, zoning matters. You can't get financing without banks understanding what you've purchased, okay? So when we toy with underlying zoning and we say, well, we like rental, but we don't like affordable, that's, as I, I understand it, not what the article says, not what the bylaw says. So that needs to be adjusted or we need to work together to achieve compromise. I will say, and again, in no way am I casting aspersions, but I would dare say, if someone were to have proposed rental, what I call commodity housing on this site of 20 or 30 units, there would be a massive uproar about character because the building quality would be inferior. The building quality here, we can debate, we should debate massing, landscape, great, great comments earlier and that's why we're here. The building quality by the largest developer in Massachusetts currently, I think is going to be pretty darn good. They also know how to build and they know how to build quickly. So there's all sorts of things we talked about in the 204 meeting about impacts, laydown, where you get, where your contractor's sub's going to go, et cetera. Moving on, if, if you'll indulge me, I want to also say that, forgive me, as a lifelong resident, many in this room were born and raised. When my parents owned restaurants in Harwich Port, multiple and in South Harwich, in the 18, 1980s and 1990s, Harwich Port was on a decline. That is a fact. That is not up for debate. Whichmer Harbor Club, Whichmer Harbor Club, no longer, then not the Beach Club, which has conveniently turned its back on our harbor, calling itself the Beach Club. Recently proposed to knock down the Snowin, okay? Forgive me again, I did not see this level of attendance in those meetings. My grandmother's house at 68 Snowin Road was just knocked down for a massive mansion, okay? Not a McMansion, a mansion. That is subs, you know, underpinning, changes hard. But we as a town decided some years ago that multifamily in the downtown was important. Lastly, I will say, and, and again urge you all to participate, that, forgive me. I think I covered everything. Nope, sorry. When you think about coming to these meetings and we, I urge you to continue to participate. They will go on again in the autumn. They will go through the meeting. Stay involved. I appreciate the time. I appreciate the indulgence of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Wykoff. I lived on Freeman Street since 1977. I own the tiniest house on Snowin Road. And I am also the current owner of the former Heather's Hairport and I'm going to be putting a business in there, which I'm very excited about. What I'd like to suggest is that the board consider the vision of Harwich Port and what it is that we're looking at. What is it that you want for Harwich Port? It's true that it went through a downturn and it was, it was a downturn that was a result of a lot of buildings being torn down without a second thought. In fact, some of them were torn down overnight. In fact, two beautiful homes where the Sunday School is located right now were torn down. And I understand you might find three horses buried underneath the property when you dig up. But I think the point is, is that every, every vibrant business district in the towns on the Cape is precariously balanced. And it has to do with how many rooms are there? How many beds are there in hotels that turn over? How many restaurants do you have? How many rentals are there? How many motels do you have? And when it gets off balance, it doesn't work. And we've all seen when it doesn't work in Harwich Port, when that balance is totally skewed. So I'm a little concerned here with the viability of Harwich Port because what I'm hearing is, is that my property is now going to be way more valuable if I turn it just into housing or I just turn it into condos. That's going to make way more money than what I'm going to be able to do by operating a business. And yet I believe that business is important to the town. I'm also a little concerned that a large building of that caliber. I'm also a little concerned that a large building of that caliber, if it's not for rentals, and it may not be, I don't know what your structure around it's going to be. But I think there's the possibility that we're going to have what we see in most places, where people spend an enormous amount of money for a piece of Cape that they occupy for maybe two weeks out of the year. You can talk to the harbor masters, and they'll tell you how many boats sit in the water and never get used. To me, that says we're going to have a very large, empty building. And while that might be good for traffic flow, it is not good for business. And it is not good for the viability of the town. So I think it really has a lot to do with the vision and the character and what it is that we want our town to provide for us. You know, do we want the small privately-owned stores? Do we want a beautiful place to walk? A place to spend our evenings and stroll and stores and restaurants? Or do we want to just see housing? I think that there might be a compromise for me, and that would be that perhaps a mixed use. I would much rather see something that is mixed use than something that is totally condoed, luxury housing. And so that's really just my thought. But thank you. Thank you. And I look forward to more.
Step right up. We have a room full here. I'm sure there are other people who'd like to address. From the public? Ms. Nickerson.
Sorry, I thought I'd be at the back of the line for this one. Good evening. Barbara Nickerson, 617 Route 28, Catty Corner from this, what used to be my favorite place to go. I think I'd like to preface by saying a couple of things and that Ms. Rose brought up that this is probably an emotional group also because of Sunday School. But I'm not going to talk about emotion because my husband and I are not dead-set against a project that provides condominiums in the area. But we are dead-set against the size of this thing. Way too big. And you are affecting the neighborhood with the size, the bulk, et cetera, et cetera. Currently, and Christine, you correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, in the CB and RL zoning, you've got a 30-foot height limit. And I keep hearing 39 feet. It's what you all are going to, your building is going to be 39 feet?
It's for the multifamily special use. They are allowed to go up to 40 feet as a maximum building height.
Okay, so.
And the complication is at 39.7 feet.
Okay, so if we get the special permit. But currently, it's 30-foot height, correct? In CB?
I believe so.
Okay, if I thought. Okay, so on your staff questions, one of the questions was that whether or not staff is confirming the roof ridge line height at 55.4 feet?
That should be clarified. That was at average sea level at the base. And so, but the height of the building, when you drive by it, will be at 39.7 feet. So it will not be at the ridge line of 55.4.
Okay, all right. It was made clear to us at the meeting, May 2nd, that there will be no affordable housing. I mean, that was probably one of the first things that came out of your mouths. So I guess that's a shame that something isn't set aside. The young man spoke about the fact that we can't keep young people in Harwich. And, you know, it might be great for a person, single person, to say, "I'm going to leave my big house and go to a $900,000, one-bedroom condo." But, you know, I don't like this reality, guys. I really don't. Who's going to clean a house? There's nobody here. I guess I'm a little concerned also the fact that there's only a 20,000-square-foot difference between Star Market and this building on square footage. You know, 159, 251, and grocery stores at 79,065. I mean, that does not give me warm fuzzies that, you know, this thing's going to be as big as Star Market.
Mr. Chair, if I may. For Star Market, the footprint of Star Market is much bigger than this proposed project.
I know.
And we can provide information to that.
I know. It's just, you know, how big is big enough in Harwich? I mean, we're dealing with this. This is massive. You know, we got the atrocity that's proposed down on Whichmer, you know, to be the biggest building on the lower Cape. I mean, what do we want? I appreciate Ms. Wykoff's comments. What is our vision for Harwich Port? I mean, I think our local comprehensive plan that's coming out has a vision for Harwich Port and Harwich and the other villages involved also. And as far as, you know, the Melrose, the Melrose was built for a reason. It was told at that point that they had to mimic the facade and the size, approximate size of when, of what the original inn was, which had been added on to for decades. But you also have a bigger lot. That's 1.9 acres. Yours is 1.75 acres. And you've got that dog leg that is almost totally out of the picture. Another question that staff had was, "Does the scale fit of the project fit Harwich Port and the surrounding area?" Not only no, hell no. It's too big. So a couple of the comments on the septic system, and I don't expect an answer on this tonight, but I would like an answer at some point. Your septic system, your building is going to be in the Whichmer Harbor watershed. Are you doing anything specifically with the nitrogen removal there? Hopefully, you are. It's just a question, I'm not accusing. Your roof deck, to me, that is perfect material for peeping tom into the backyards on the Butters.
Yes, sir.
You know, come on. You're going to be up there having your drinks, having dinner, and then all of a sudden, you're going to be looking at people on Bank Street. Oh, look at that young lady laying out at the pool. Come on. Enough is enough. Three stories. I know this won't go over well, but I would like to request that a decision on such a large project, wait until we have the most recent and updated local comprehensive plan in place instead of relying on a document that's 15 years old. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angelo Kiriakakis. I live at 78 Bank Street with my wife Rita. I'm an architect by profession. And I am totally taken back by the scale of this project in the community that we live in. There is no consideration at all for the scale of all the other residences. And when we do renovations, we have to abide by those scales. But here, they're maximizing the footprint. They're maximizing the height to within inches, which is the minimum they can do for us is stay under that guideline of 40 feet or 39 feet by five inches or six inches, and they meet those requirements. So I'm hoping the board looks at that a little more severely and say, "What are you giving back to the community when you're coming in with such a large project with such a scale that is overwhelming for this small town?" This town really is a pedestrian scale. It's a walkable scale. It's a community that you know your neighbor. We're not going to know these people in these units. They're going to come, they're going to go. We're never going to see them. But my concern is the scale of this. It has Cape Cod features and shingles, but it has no Cape Cod scale. And I'm really looking for that to happen here. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Bob Pianto, 89 Bank Street, in a Butter. But I haven't heard from, actually, I saw Robert at the meeting, but no one has approached me since then. I don't know where to begin. But I think our attorney at the table mentioned quantifying. And I think I'd like to quantify. How many people in the room believe this is a positive project? Could you raise your hands? Oh, we have two. How many feel that this is a negative project? I think I've just quantified what you're looking for. I'm just, Angelo, it's just too big. And I don't want to qualify it as, you know, whether I like it or it's architecturally wonderful or not. It's just too damn big. It's too damn tall. The size, the scope, the project is excessive for the location. Robert, I'm stunned, actually, that the fellows who were proposing this worked at Sunday School, have no sensitivity what Sunday School meant and the size or the shape of it means that you didn't. And I think that's a real miss for you. I think this, I don't have a problem going and proposing something at the right scale, with the right architecture. I think people would cheer. This isn't it. It misses the entire reason why people come to Harwich Port. Completely. I could see myself moving into a unit that you were building if it was at the scale. The loss of this iconic business into the area of tourism is hard to replace. We're not going to replace Sunday School. That feeling. I'm also very concerned with the high risk of these units being non-owner occupied or rental. And I think if the sales falter, we're going to be in trouble. We're going to be looking at a lot of empty units. And you're going to come back and say, "We need to renegotiate. We can't do this. We want something from the town." And this, not to disparage any building, but there are four units in a commercial building in Harwich Port that haven't sold one. They're beautiful. Stunning inside. But the market didn't seem to accept it. Environmentally, I'm really concerned. You've got engineers here. You're digging out a basement. I'd love to see a profile of that building and a cut through that building and show me how you're doing that. What are the mechanisms under that floor that if we have a gasoline spill in that basement, where's that gasoline got to go? Do you have chambers for that? So there's no explosion? You do? Excellent. But I'd like to see a profile of that because that tells me you're digging down even deeper below the floor space. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. So you know that. There's the basement. And then there's under the basement. We've got to worry about explosions. Okay? They didn't tell you that. The other, some of the other things that, you know, I think, we're digging a basement, we're putting in a big building, we have septic. And it seems to me that, and the engineers, I'm sure, will challenge this, that, you know, we're kind of overcharging the soils that we have available. And where's, you know, where that absorption go? And does it go to the neighbors? So the other point about sewage, we just spent almost $2 million on Coldbrook. Are you familiar with that? The purpose of Coldbrook? To mitigate nitrates.
So remember, we're talking about this project.
Yeah, I am. Because this project is about 1,000 yards, if I could hit a driver that far, to the edge of Coldbrook. We're trying to mitigate nitrates, and we're dropping 28 units, you know, shoehorning this into a space. And we're taking out a basement. The basement's gone, so there's no absorption there. And a septic system. Crazy. So, you know, it just, here's the other thing that just blows me away. So we've got so much evidence. So we go, we can go down to Florida, and condos are collapsing. Not the same architecture, I understand. But that was well-intended, not working. I was in Charleston a couple of weeks ago. AD-unit condo evacuated near the port. Can't sustain itself. Then we go to Seaport. Let's go up the coast. Seaport, Boston. Here's a great project. They built it at sea level. It floods. Our sea, no, I mean, I guess we can argue sea level rising, maybe, yes, probably. So water intrusion, we're on a sandbar. And we're putting in a basement with cars underneath it, cars inside of it. I just think it's poorly, just poorly conceived. And there's so much better we can do. I think you all could do a better job. You know, you're not going to like this. I'd say you come back with a plan between six and eight units, and your construction costs are a lot lower. People will be in market for it. Green space. People come to the Cape to be outside. You've got them in boxes. You know, they got a little deck, and they go, "That's not why people..." I did a Google search. Why do people come to Cape Cod? I didn't hear one person say, "I want to go see a condo." They want to go beaches, they want to go hiking. They want to go, they'd love to go to an ice cream shop, like Sunday School. And all of those elements, you've just taken away. And what you're proposing is just, you put the stake in the heart of what Harwich is about. I'm done. Thank you.
Does anybody else tonight? Moving on to nine o'clock, this will be our last piece of input.
My name is Bob Reed. Live on 52 Point Road in Harwich Port. Three minutes, four minutes' walk away from the proposed project. I have a question, either for the applicants or for anybody on the planning board. Are you aware of any residential structure in any of the 13, whatever it is, 14 towns on Cape Cod that has an underground garage?
I think there are probably multiple in Hyannis, the new development behind Independence. Is that, yeah?
Okay, because I guess it's a parochialism of thinking in terms of lower Cape and outer Cape and all the rest of the stuff. Perhaps I should have said, because Hyannis is a small-level city. Perhaps Dennis Yarmouth out to P-Town. Does anyone know? And I would submit that over all the decades that people here have experienced, we've never seen this happen. Yeah, you can find it in Braintree and Quincy or some of the coastal communities like Fort Lauderdale with rows of condos on it. But it's never been a common feature of any residential community that I'm aware of in the entire area. And so it has approval of this plan as it's been designed and constructed. It's really, in my mind, creating a precedent that is rather objectionable to me for a number of reasons. My mother, in her retirement, went to a condominium on the Cambridge, Mass. line with underground parking. And I'm familiar with those environments. And I don't think it's a positive enhancement to the project in the slightest. And again, what I think people are saying, because I could spend the whole night going after one or another specific features of the project. But I relate mostly to the concepts people, to the comments people have made here about the atmosphere of a town, what a place not only looks like, but feels like, what attracts people here. And I don't think it's this kind of project that does that. And therefore, I would say that it does somewhat. Approval, as it's been designed, would negatively infect the environment, the feeling of the town. And it's very hard to quantify that. But I think most people know why they came here and why such overwhelming... here, and why such an overwhelming majority, people's first reaction to this is, no, this is wrong for here. And that's something I agree with as well. Thanks for, like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Flynn. I just want to correct point of order. The Belmont.
Thank you.
Has underground parking, and that's a great example. Belmont Inn was an iconic West Harwich institution. It was torn down, the Belmont condos were built, they're the most highest-priced condos in this community today. Ms. Wykoff, I was the first tenant of your building at the corner of 28 and Bank Street when it was first built. And after that, I bought a building in Harwichport, and I was part of the rejuvenation of Harwichport. Back in the late 90s, early 2000s, when Dr. Gravities was being done, I was also sitting on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and we built the visitor center that's there today. I redid a building, I have the right to put apartments, I chose not at the time to do so. But I watched the building next to me, Cape Roots, go through the same process. Now we have a thriving coffee shop next door, and yes, the apartments upstairs, they were priced much too high when they hit the market, much too high. So they became rentals. They're very active VRBO rentals. We have a new building being built across from Cumberland Farms. If you look, they put the screening up so you couldn't see how far they went down. But the point is, that was approved for a restaurant, and five shops, and five more condos. I was actively involved, the Melrose, when that was torn down and rebuilt. In fact, the developer at the time donated the bricks from the fireplace, because they were responsible bricks. And they donated those to us so that we could resell them for the Ecumenical Council for the homeless, so we could raise funds for them. And I've represented many of those Melrose units that are being sold today. The problems we have in our community, like many across the Commonwealth, there is no supply for property. There is so little, and there are so many clients who want exactly what pretty much each and every one of you have, that beautiful place in Harwichport. They all want it, and they're willing to spend millions of dollars to have one of those. And what it's done, because there is so little supply, has created tremendous price increases, which causes the issue with available housing, with workforce housing, or affordable housing. I'm not sure where I play in this. I would ask the developers, who I think have put a plan together, and they want to do what is allowed by law. I would love to see a condition that does not allow for short-term rentals, like the Belmont, I mean, like the Melrose has. They do allow a lease. And for someone who said they'll never see these people, I put a client into the Melrose. She was 92 years old. 92, she was still driving. She celebrated her 99th birthday this year, and she walked every day on her walker from the Melrose downtown, and she went when Cape Roots was built, to go get a cup of coffee and a muffin every day. Those people live there. I've talked to three clients today who are looking to buy in Harwichport, and they're willing to spend ridiculous money, in my opinion. But they're willing to spend it to have that piece of Harwichport that everyone wants. I think compromise is important, and I hope you, as a board, and the developers, through their attorney, can come up with something that can work, because we need housing so badly at all levels in this community. But I think people should keep an open mind, because each and every person here got their piece of the Cape. The chairman has been here all his life, many generations. He has seen how things have changed. My first office was in Harwichport 35 years ago. I bought a building, spent a lot of money to redo it, it is still there today. And yes, it has increased in value dramatically because of what's happening in Harwichport. So I urge all of you to consider compromise and working together to come out with a project that is beneficial to the town of Harwich. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waystack.
Yes.
Good chair. Would you like for Mr. DeMarco to address the short-term rental issue?
I would be delighted, if that's, that'd be great, Mr. DeMarco.
Just to settle that.
Please, let's do that.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. I know this is important to so many folks. When we had our, you know, voluntary, you know, close-in neighbor meeting, and we had a lot of people show up, as Marion discussed, we made the commitment that if this project gets approved at the 28 units, that we would voluntarily, or perhaps through a condition, you know, how it works, commit to that the people that buy these units would not be allowed to rent any more than twice, and the minimum rental would be two months. So that that would secure that the only way they could do it to be against the VRBO thing is to give it to someone for the whole, you know, the whole high season, and you wouldn't have people coming in and going out. And it's for all the reasons discussed here, and I, you know, if I was going to buy a unit in the building, and I think Mike's going to live there, but we'll see what he's, see what happens, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, you know, invest in it and have that coming and going in the building. So we think it's going to make for a much better project and a much better community in that building. If, if we can get the 28 units, we're willing to do that.
Thank you, sir. So, I think we have a number of things that we need to integrate before we have our next meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to continue the meeting until June 10th, which is our next available large-capacity room meeting. And, yeah.
Can I just make a, make a, have a, ask a question first?
Sure.
Just wondering, we've heard a lot about scale tonight. It's hard for even us to see scale on a two-dimensional drawing. It may behoove everyone to have a model, because I think with a model, you'd be able to see the step backs and the setbacks and see the scale. Just food for thought. I know it's, it's an additional item for you to do before the next meeting, but I just raise that as a, as one concern that I think might give everybody a little perspective when you see, when you're seeing it.
Thank you.
And, and while we're on the matter of perspective, I also just wanted to mention in, on the heels of what Mr. Waystack said, you know, there's a difference between shortage and scarcity. And, you know, all economic goods are subject to scarcity, like law number one of economics. So shortages occur when you put limitations on what you can do with scarcity. So, we don't want to impose the kind of scarcity's that produce the, or we don't want to enhance scarcity's and produce shortages. That's one of the things that we do not want to do. And when you have these kind of, when you do have shortages, then you have situations like on the, speaking to the Belmont, you know, 800-square-foot cinder block ranch houses that go for $1.2 million on Belmont Road. So when somebody's talking about a $900,000 apartment, we have to recalibrate our economic understanding of the value of real estate and square footage in the town. So, you know, that million-dollar threshold, the reality is, we've gotten to a point here where it's not, we can't be outraged by people that live in 800-square-foot million-dollar houses. That's not my thought about it. I used to think of, you know, large columns in huge driveways, and that's, you know, so let's, I just encourage us to like recalibrate, and when we come back, and I would, again, like to go to the motion to...
I think you're...
Before we do that, we did have several members online who, I think, in fairness to, who have been waiting to ask if any of them would like to...
Yeah, it's 10 after 9. Do we have, so I see 2, 4, 6, 9, 13 people online. Do, is there any way you can now negotiate or navigate that one, Caleb, with, you know, our hands-up kind of a situation? Or could we encourage a chat to please announce whether you do want to make a comment? Seeing none, I would like to continue with the motion, please. Suggest a motion to reconvene at...
June 10th?
June 10th, no later than 6:30.
Let me make a motion that we continue public hearing for case matter PB 2025-11 SS Harwichport LLC, Robert DeMarco, manager, until June 10th, 2025, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Marion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We now move on to new or old business, which is an empty item. We do have a town planner update for the LCP.
Yes, for the LCP.
And may I encourage everybody to continue their conversation outside? We still have a meeting to conduct. Thank you.
For the local comprehensive plan, we've been, we are moving forward, hopefully to finalize, having a final draft by the end of June.
Folks, this for...
We ask you all to please continue your conversations outside. We still have a meeting to conduct. Thank you.
This for clarity, that goes to the...
That will go, that will go to either the special town meeting in the fall, or to the next annual town meeting.
Yep.
We, we should have a final draft by the end of June from the consultant, and we will, the local planning committee will shop that around with some information sessions and to talk with, you know, to continue to solicit some support come fall. So, I just wanted to give a quick update on that. Pine Oaks Village, we did...
I'm sorry, I can't get...
Excuse me. Please, would you please move your conversations outside? We can barely hear each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
For Pine Oaks Village 4, we did have our first public hearing on April 24th. We also, I did attend a site visit with the zoning board of appeals this past Saturday. We will, the ZBA will be requesting comments for the next meeting, which is scheduled for June 18th. The topic of the subject of that evening will be traffic and public safety. That will take place at the 204 building, I mean, the 204 cultural center over on Sisson Road. And so you're welcome to attend, but I also just wanted to give you an update. We will be conducting peer reviews for traffic, public safety, stormwater, as well as any environmental and public health impacts for the project.
Just a quick question. Would it be appropriate for us to have a discussion at the June 10th meeting for a planning board comment, or is it still at staff-level comments at that point?
Um, it's, it's both staff and town, town boards. I believe the ZBA is very interested to wanting to hear from boards as well as department heads.
Okay. Then could we, could we put an agenda item on our June 10th meeting, then?
Okay.
Just so that we can have a little discussion about where it stands and what our thoughts are.
And do we need, if, are we going to have more than a couple of us there on the 13, on the June 13th? Because then we would have to have a...
June 18th.
18th, excuse me. That, would we have to...
We'd have to open a meeting.
Announce meeting or open a meeting if we're all going to be...
If there is an interest, we would have to post a meeting. I would be happy to do that for the June 18th. I just need to know who is interested in going, and I'm happy to do that.
Can we look at calendars and get back to you on that?
Sure.
Then we'll know whether...
I'm a maybe.
June 18th is Wednesday.
I think, I think there's a historic meeting that night, so I'm not sure.
But there are several meetings through October. There's at least one meeting a month through October. So, we have a meeting, one meeting in June, one meeting in July, one meeting in August, and one meeting in September, and possibly October. So, the, the applications are on the town website. I would strongly encourage you to go over the materials, and it, they're very vast. There's a lot of information. This is a 242-unit development project with multiple buildings. So, I just want to make sure that you're all aware of that. I can also resend the comments that we had submitted for the, the project eligibility letter last, last fall. So I'm happy to send that out as well.
Because they're never coming to us, our comments are going to them.
Correct. This is a comprehensive permit under the comprehensive permit law, Chapter 40B. Therefore, the local permitting board is the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Good.
And I'm assuming that we'll have some minutes at some point in the next month?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's all. Any other business before the board? Thank you all for your patience this evening. Let's have a motion to adjourn, if I may.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.